I see Friday is gonna be Cuomo's last, uh, news conference.
Really?
Yeah.
Kevin Kelly and...
And Hannah are not attending.
Hannah, oh, we're, okay.
That works better, right?
You're the best.
No problem.
Funny, every time I see my younger son, the Becky, here, show me how to do this. What did I do this? How did I get this on? Get this off.
Oh, I don't know.
I'll do that, though. I'm just handing it to the phone. We're here, fix this. I'm doing what I needed to do. It froze up. Thing he's got, like, he's got a Camry to watch his dog at home.
Well, does he? Can he talk to it too?
Turbo thing, right? Yeah, and then he's got a ding. When the bell goes off, the dog comes, sits down in front of it, and it spits it. It spits it out a bone. I s- he says, "I told you." He says, "I bought stock in this." It's funny, as soon as the dog hears that bell, whoop, sits right down in front of it.
You tell me, ready for her unmute? Okay, you can let them in and unmute.
You are unmuted.
She's gone. So you...
All stand for a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So you're standing ready to say contrary?
Okay. Good evening. Like the call, a call to order the Borough of Saro Planning Board meeting of June seventeenth, twenty twenty. That has this meeting been advertised in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act?
Yes, Chairman, it has. To help keep the meeting as organized as possible, residents who wish to speak in one of the public portions are to press star nine, which will notify us that a person from the public wishes to speak. At that time, you will be asked for your name and address and be limited to the five-minute comment period. Everybody who's on there, please mute your computers. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Diadio? Councilman Delena? Mr. Kelly? Mr. McEnone?
Present.
Ms. O'Leary? Ms. Ochenge?
Here.
Ms. Patel?
Here.
Ms. Palowski?
Here.
Mr. Savelli? Mr. Ty? Chairman Davis? Mr. Cornell? Mr. O'Farrey?
Here.
Mr. Fowler? Mr. Fowler?
He's muted.
He's here. On the record. We have a call.
Now, memorialization of resolution?
On tonight, we have Otz, Ot Daniel Minor Subdivision request for time extension, three, two, two, one, Bordentown Avenue, block twenty-nine, lots four and six and four and five.
Like to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we give them the requested time extension. Second.
We have a roll call, please?
Mr. Diadio? Mr. Diadio? So we have a motion and a second. We need to do a roll call-
We're doing roll call now?
For the acceptance of the resolution. Mr. Diadio? Councilman Delena?
He's muted on his, you can see.
Are they muted? Yeah.
On his own computer, he's muted. He should be able to hear you.
Members, you need to unmute first, and then you can mute back. Can, can you hear me?
And any members yours?
Anyone? Okay, so we have a, a motion and a second. Roll call, Mr. Diadio?
What are you asking?
We're, we're doing a roll call for the resolution.
For time extension? You had a motion?
Okay, yes.
Councilman Delena?
Yes.
Mr. McEnone?
Yes.
Ms. Ochenge?
Yes.
Ms. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Savelli?
Yes.
Mr. Ty?
Yes.
Ca- Chairman Davis?
Yes.
Okay, resolution.
Now looking, uh, acceptance of the minutes from the May sixth, twenty twenty. Does any members have any questions on those minutes? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from May sixth.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now we'll have, uh, the communication agenda?
No communications.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I'll have a site plan subdivision?
So tonight, we have OEG Building Materials preliminary and final site plan application. Location is six thousand and one Bordentown Avenue, block nine, lot one. Their attorney is Mr. Bob Smith. Mr. Smith, can you hear us?
Is it? Yes, is it appropriate for me to begin?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Davis, uh, my name is Bob Smith. I'm, uh, attorney for the, and also a licensed attorney in the state of New Jersey. And, uh, as, uh, this man said, we're here tonight seeking preliminary and final site plan approval, so that we can construct a sixty-two to four-hundred-and-thirty-square-foot warehouse. The property is at six thousand and one Bordentown Avenue. It's a twenty-three-point-one-five-acre site. It is in the S P D Economic Development Zone. Uh, we are also seeking two bulk carriages, uh, one out of the, uh, caution. We, uh, there is an existing condition, uh, where we have a front yard set for fifty feet are required, and there is an existing building at point five seventeen. Uh, when we looked at this, we came to the conclusion, first, it's an imperfect condition, and secondly, it's a very old site, and through its various approvals, that must have been approved previously. But in abundance, the caution, we're asking for it. And then, secondly, in the course of the planner's review, and then his forwarding the report on, uh, June twelfth, planner has identified another, uh, variance, uh, namely, uh, a, uh, buffer variance, where there's fifty feet required when you have an industrial next to residential zone, and you add five feet per up to ten feet of building length. So the, the variant, a seventy-foot buffer where there's an existing twenty feet. Of course, there's more facts that we can include by the board, but in any case, that is a variance that we discovered through the planner's analysis, what we may read. Uh, and in our notice, we provided the magic language and any other variances which in the opinion of the board may be reading. Noted for, uh, everything, in fact. Uh, it's my intention, Mr. Chairman, you call five witnesses. The first witness is Asher Angle, who is the management, uh, person at OEG Building Materials, who will talk about what we're hoping to do, uh, on the site. Uh, now, the next will be Mr. Rich Oberman, who is our licensed professional engineer, who go over the site, the surrounding area, and all the normal things, parking, landscaping, etc., etc. Our third witness is John Ray, who is a professional engineer and a well-recognized traffic expert, deal with any traffic or circulation issues that the board might have any concerns about. Our fourth witness is Jose Carvalho, who is a New Jersey licensed architect, who described what the proposed building will look like, and our, our batter. Last batter, it will be Christine Cipone, who is our professional planner, to provide justification for, uh, any variances and any justification for design reasons. Uh, so that's the, that's the lineup. With your permission, Mr. Chairman, I would, uh, ask that Asher Angle of OEG be called and sworn, so that he can give testimony.
Okay, thank you. Dante, would you please swear him in?
Yes, uh, before we swear in, uh, Asher, I'd like to just note that, um, I've reviewed the notice, and, uh, the notices are acceptable. Um, Mr. Angle, can you please provide, uh, can you please swear your last name?
E N G E L.
Uh, do, can you, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth?
Yes, I do.
And you said E N G L E R?
E N G C L.
E L, E R.
No, no E R, just E N G E L.
Thank you. All right, with, uh, your indulgence, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Angle, for the record, by who are you employed and in what capacity?
Yes, thank you, everybody, for coming together tonight, uh, to help us with this, uh, application. And, um, I'm employed by, uh, company OEG Building Materials, and, uh, located at six thousand and one Bordentown Avenue, the chairman of New Jersey. And, um, I'm, I'm employed here as the chief financial officer, and I'm gonna be, uh, representing the company this evening.
Good, and you're familiar with the operations, obviously, at the site, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and, uh, what is it that, uh, OEG Materials does on the site, generally?
Well, let me tell you a little about OEG, uh, uh, Building Materials. Right now, uh, historically, we've been a steel framing manufacturer. Uh, we manufacture, we buy flat rolled steel, and we, we, uh, put it on a roll form, basically, and form it, uh, for metal studs, uh, for commercial buildings. We also roll form steel decks, and, um, we ship, uh, all up in the tri-state area and all over the country. Uh, there are two thousand, uh, in two thousand eight, we moved into Madelon, New Jersey, three ninety-five, three thirty-four, which is not far from where we are now in Stairville. And, uh, we had about five acres there, and as the company grew, we needed to find, uh, a larger site. Um, so we basically, in two thousand sixteen, decided to, uh, purchase, uh, this site over here at six thousand and one Bordentown, uh, to give us some more room to grow. Um, so, with that, you know, after that, it was up to about, uh, two thousand nineteen, in two, March of two thousand nineteen, OEG Building Materials purchased the asset of a company called Stress Bar Systems International, and, um, that company, that, uh, facility is, uh, we're leasing space right now in Englewood, New Jersey. And, um, we're looking to, uh, expand, uh, the operations of that company that we purchased in March of two thousand nineteen and bring it over here and have everything in one site here in Stairville, New Jersey. And, um, that's gonna be housing, uh, the production of, uh, steel, um, cages for deep foundations. Uh, we're gonna elaborate on the, the end reason of that if you'd like, or, uh...
All right, David, hold on, hold on for just a minute, so that we can go through our narratives, uh, in the third board discussion. So, for example, I think one of the things the board needs to know is a little bit about the history of the Bordentown Avenue site. You bought it in, you said, two thousand and sixteen.
Correct.
What was, what was the prehistory to that?
The prehistory to that is, the, the site was owned by a company called Murrells Technology, uh, short for Min-Tech, basically. And, um, when we, when we came upon the site, the site had been vacant, uh, for about ten years. They're just using one small area to, to do some sort of, uh, work, but basically, the site was empty. The buildings were in, you know, in bad shape, and, um, that, before mineral technology, there's a whole long history on the site. Uh, I don't, I don't recall the whole history, but that's, you know, probably fifty years old, but...
Absolutely. It's one of our older industrial sites in New Jersey, but I, the point that you expressed that I wanted to make with board is that it had been empty, basically vacant for ten years prior to OEG coming to the site. Now, uh, we're before the board tonight seeking approval for sixty-two thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-square-foot warehouse. What are you gonna do? Tell us what you're gonna do in the new building. What, what is, what's gonna happen there, and what, what are these materials, uh, your products gonna be used for?
Okay, so, uh, this, this, uh, this company, uh, we purchased Stress Bar Steel Systems International, um, deals in very deep foundation reinforcements. When, um, when you wanna put up a, a large superstructure building, let's say a tower, a skyscraper in New York City, for example, or Chicago, uh, what's needed is, what's needed is a very deep foundation. So what they do is they drill down, uh, a hundred feet down, let's say, sometimes even deeper, and they're powered steel, uh, cages. We, we, we fabricate steel cages, and they go into the ground, and the, and then it's reinforced with concrete. So, uh, that's a, a very large application, and this application, um, would be, uh, you know, steel cages that we make for deep foundations.
All right, does that have, does that have application to windows?
Uh, yes, uh, we actually are bidding on, we're hoping to get an opportunity to bid on. The New Jersey has a, um, a project coming up, and, uh, it's gonna start in about a year. And, uh, they're, they're having a massive window farm being, uh, constructed off the shore of, uh, Atlantic City area. And, um, it's gonna give the energy to, from what I understand, massive energy, just energy to New Jersey. And these, um, these windows are, are, are massive structures, are very tall structures, and they need very strong, um, fort, um, fortification, basically, foundations that get, you know, drill up down to the ocean floor, and they use our, our, uh, that is bar, which we buy, which we purchase in the middle, we use that kind of bar to, to reinforce it. So, we're hoping to get, uh, an opportunity to, uh, the, the, you know, sell to that project as well.
Good. So you're gonna be, you're gonna be a part of New Jersey's clean energy future?
Well, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, and by the way, that's also true in Saro. Um, my understanding is that you made a pretty serious investment in solar panels on the roofs of many of the buildings in this, uh, project.
That's correct. Uh, we, we, um, we did a massive solar project, uh, which went live last year in October of two thousand and nineteen, and, uh, we invested a lot of money into that, into that project. And, um, you know, we're a green company, basically, we're very, it's green steel itself, the, the use of steel is, is, uh, is very green. And, um, on the new, uh, building, we plan on, uh, putting solar as well, perhaps to the, uh, perhaps to the project.
Okay, and I, I think it makes to me, because I always ask the same questions of my clients, that, uh, that, that solar installation, uh, also contributed about eighty-five thousand dollars in fees to Saro, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. There was, uh, twenty-five dollars in panel, and there was, uh, the, I think it was over three thousand panels, and, um, it was, uh, quite a hefty, uh, occupancy, uh, for the solar, uh, for the Stairville building project.
All right, but that being said, you're still going to do more solar panels on this new building, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, uh, currently, how many employees do you employ at this site?
We currently have, um, about a hundred and twenty employees at the site.
Okay, and if-
Uh, check down about a hundred and thirty, I'm sorry, a hundred and thirty.
A hundred and thirty, and, uh, if the board is kind enough to grant us an approval for this new building, how many new jobs do you anticipate being created by this new industry?
Well, right now, in, in Englewood, we have, uh, about thirty, uh, thirty or thirty-five shop employees over there. And this building is gonna be built with size of our, our building that we're gonna have in Englewood, so with the added room, you know, we anticipate, uh, quite a bit of growth. We, we, we're doubling our size, basically, and, uh, we're, you know, we're anticipating, uh, quite a bit of growth in that number of thirty, thirty-five employees, so...
I'm gonna be-
I'm understanding to double, but, you know, uh, we're hoping, uh, the employees that work there will come with us, but if they don't, then it'll probably be, bring more jobs to, you know, to the area. We can hire people that live around there, and, uh, bring more jobs to the area, obviously.
All right, that's your existing site. What are your hours of operation?
So, uh, right now, um, this, uh, on this con- this particular building, this, uh, Stress Bar Steel, our, our hours are, our, our, our morning shift starts at, uh, this is in Englewood, morning shift starts at, uh, six o'clock and goes to three, and then we have, um, a small, uh, night shift going from, uh, three to twelve, just, uh, you know, straightening up paperwork, that kind of stuff, but most of the heavy manufacturing gets done on the day shift.
All right, now, how about your existing operation?
Our existing, our existing operation, uh, is basically, uh, the first, the first shift starts at, uh, nine o'clock and ends at five, and then we have, uh, second shift coming in, whatever the first shift is gonna finish, uh, from, from five to one. And we have, uh, that's basically the operation. We do have people here throughout, we have this staff here, we have some individuals here throughout the night, but, uh, uh, that's, that's basically the, uh, hour of operation.
Oh, so at the site now, you have twenty-four-hour operation, one kind and another, uh, is that true, seven days a week or less?
That would be, uh, six days a week, uh, and, um, you know, uh, Friday and Sunday is a much lighter schedule, obviously, but, uh, more or less, that's, uh, we close on Saturday.
All right, so, a request to, to the board, or, or the understanding that we wanna convey to the board that this would be a twenty-four-six operation, twenty-four hours a day, six days a week, no work on Saturday, correct?
Correct.
Okay, the, um, can you, uh, tell us the number of trucks per day on average that, uh, come to the site or leave the-
You are muted.
Well, um, we, so when we moved into the site, you know, just the first thing we did, what attracted us to the site was the fact that it was rail. And, uh, rail, obviously, is a law mark and on its boat, ways to transport heavy steel. So, um, we, we, for incoming, uh, for incoming steel, ninety percent of our incoming raw materials are transported onto the site via rail. Uh, so we don't really have all that much truck volume coming onto the site, uh, for raw materials. So finished goods, uh, it's, it's, uh, we have, uh, we have a sister company called OEG Transporting, and, um, right now, we have a fleet of, of thirteen trucks and about seventeen trailers. Um, so, you know, on a, on a good day, we're, uh, you know, we, we, we fill all our trucks up and, and, uh, we go out. Uh, the new company that, uh, is gonna be moving onto the site, I would say is an average of, uh, between four to six trucks a day that will be heading out.
Okay, thank you. And is there, are there ever any visitors at the site?
Visitor, um-
You are unmuted, whatever.
Yeah, I was saying that there's, uh, there's, on occasion, we have, uh, salespeople coming in, or customers coming in, or, you know, meetings, definitely.
If it was, if it was a couple a day, it would be a lot?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I think that, I think that's all the questions I have for you. Uh, is there anything else you wanna add, Mr. Angle?
Um, so, we, you know, we just wanted to, uh, talk a little more about the, uh, the product over here and the importance of the product, um, for, uh, the area and for construction in the area. And I don't wanna take up anybody's house more time than that, but, uh, we are, like, I just want to talk about a couple of projects that we're actually working on, and we actually bid. Uh, we actually had the opportunity to bid Riverton, which is a Stairville job also, uh, which, uh, from what I understand, needs, um, uh, since it's near the water, there is, uh, some strong, um, reinforcements that's needed there for the foundations over there. And, um, um, we're currently, um, delivering a couple of, uh, very high-profile jobs. Uh, one job is, um, in Groveton, Connecticut, it's for, uh, a company called General Dynamics Electric Boat. And, um, they manufacture nuclear submarines for, uh, the US, um, they, specifically for the US Army. And, uh, they're pretty got the new, uh, facility there now, since it's submarines, it's near the water, so again, it needs, um, very strong reinforcement. And, um, uh, that's a quite a large job that we've been working on throughout the year, delivering, uh, uh, these cage, these steel cages, so we put, so we fabricated the shop. I, I, I submitted some, some photos just, uh, to give everybody an idea of what, what these cages look like. Um, some of them are very, very large, uh, you know, up to six feet in diameter. And, um, we're also delivering, uh, right now, to another, uh, night-time job in New York City, uh, Three Seventy Park, which is gonna be, uh, future headquarters for, uh, J.P. Morgan Chase. Uh, they're pretty got a fifteen hundred-foot tower there in the city, and, um, we're, we're working on the foundation now, uh, with, um, uh, to, you know, reinforce the bars. And, um, we're just, uh, looking forward to, uh, having everything under, uh, one, one roof, so thick, and, um, again, I appreciate everybody's, uh, time and, uh, late in the evening, and, um, thank you, everybody.
Okay, Mr. Angle is available for questions- Okay. Mr. Rangel is available for questions from the board. Mr. Rangel, Bobby Alferi, just a quick question. Uh, you mentioned the new employees. I, I couldn't, I didn't have a number. Um, for purposes of resolution, do you have a, a number that you wanna include?
It'd be about, it'd be about thirty employees that would be coming initially on, you know, onto the site, onto the building, you know, buck and running.
And then assuming that everyone from Ainsley comes down as well, right? Doubling the operation of thirty in Inglewood now, all thirty came down, so probably need an additional thirty.
No, I'm just saying, uh, I'm just saying right now, the, the, you know, what's, what's for sure is the, you know, the amount of employees that we have now will be coming over. If you add another, if you add another twenty or thirty, that's, you know, that's up to speculation. That's, I'm not, I'm not gonna figure that.
Okay. Sounds great. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if there are, if there are any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Obergman, can everyone hear me?
Go ahead, Michael.
Yes.
Okay, just, uh, to our attorney, I don't wanna see anything on the resolution, um, but limiting this company to the amount of employees. And please word it there that being approximately, uh, amount of employees. If the company grows and if he decides to hire more people, I really don't wanna see him be out of compliance to, uh, to do any more job.
No objection to that.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, I'll call our second witness.
That's fine.
All right. I'd ask that Rich Oberman, he called and sworn so that he can give testimony as our licensed professional engineer.
Mr. Oberman, do you swear and affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you please spell your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Rich Oberman, O-B-E-R-M-A-N.
Thank you.
Mr. Oberman, for the record, by whom are you employed and in what capacity?
I am a project manager for New Lines Engineering in Lakewood, New Jersey.
And, um, you, you have not been previously accepted by this board as an engineer, correct?
I have not.
So, would you give us the benefit of the short version of your credentials as a licensed PE?
Sure. I, I'm, uh, current, I'm graduated from Penn State University, nineteen seventy-eight, bachelor's science degree in civil engineering. Have over forty years of engineering experience, am a current professional engineer licensed in the state of New Jersey, and nine surrounding states, and have appeared before many board, planning boards and zoning boards in the state.
Great.
Second.
Yeah, and it, we had a little background noise. Uh, I, Mr. Oberman was accepted as a licensed PE?
Yes, he was.
Yes?
Good, yes.
I, I made the, Mike, you already, I made the motion. I don't know if it was second or not.
Oh. We have a second for the motion?
Yeah, we had a motion in a second already. You can continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, Mr. Oberman, if you would, please review the existing site and the surrounding property for the board.
As, as previously, previously stated, OEG is a manufacturing facility, approximately twenty-three acres, has multiple buildings on the site, parking areas, truck loading and loading areas, and drives that are associated with the use. The property is bordered on the west side by Robert Street, on the south side by Borden Town Avenue, and on the north and east by South River and Deep Run. Along with the new building addition, there will be new employee parking areas, related site improvements such as drainage, lighting, and landscaping are, are also, are also proposed. The site currently has three existing locations with ingress and egress. Two are driveways located off of Borden Town Avenue, and one is off of Robert Street. There's also an active railroad spur on the property that does service the, the site. Because of the property's proximity to the water, it's located within a special flood hazard area, and there are some wetlands located on portions of the, of the site also. We acknowledge that other governmental approvals are necessary for this site.
Um, if you wouldn't mind, maybe if you could describe some of the improvements. Talk, tell me about the building, the parking, landscaping, lighting, detention. What is it that's in front of the board?
Okay, we're, we're actually proposing a sixty-two thousand square foot, uh, building, where it's gonna have, um, truck loading and unloading areas. We're also proposing, uh, employee parking area along Robert Street, where there will be drainage facilities for that parking, as well as landscape trees along, um, all along the employee parking area as well. There's also employee parking area, um, in front of the, the new building, and it is adjacent to Borden Town Avenue. Total, total proposed parking is a hundred and thirteen spaces.
All right, which is more than adequate for what you proposed?
Yes.
Okay. And there was no parking variance needed as well. Uh, how about, how about lighting?
The, the, the entire, the entire property, uh, in the areas of the truck loading and unloading area, we have building packs, and the employee parking area will have standard, um, light poles and fixtures so that they obtain the township, uh, regulation of, of lighting in that area for, for employee parking.
Right. I believe there was an earlier comment, I think maybe coming through, it was still over. Has that been taken care of?
Yeah, yes, uh, that's one of the waivers that would have had, that would have had been asked for. But, um, we, we have, uh, been able to redesign that lighting, and, uh, there won't be any still on to, on to Robert Street, and that waiver, uh, we will, we will, we will not ask for.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if it's appropriate, should I have, uh, Mr. Oberman respond to, uh, Mr. Cornell's re- Mr. Cornell was trying to give us, was trying to give us an updated report as of today, dated, since two thousand twenty. Uh, is this the appropriate time, Mr. Chairman, to go over the report?
Yes, it would be. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, Mr. Oberman, have you reviewed the report dated June seventeenth, two thousand twenty?
I have not seen that report.
Well, now you're killing me, Mr. Oberman.
Yeah.
The, uh-
I have, I have the May eighteenth report.
All right. Well, Mr. Chairman, just for- So, there's no changes to the technical review that Mr. Oberman has told us. Great. All right. So, uh, Mr. Oberman, let's go through that technical review. The first, first section is, is section A.
Yes, in order, in order to respond to Mr. Cornell's, uh, review letter, uh, I was not gonna offer comments on each and every item. All, all, we're, we're gonna agree with most of them, but I'm gonna make comments where information or testimony is appropriate.
Okay, first, so, first, first, before you do that, I wanna make sure that's an acceptable approach for the board. In other words, we're going to agree to everything except certain things where additional comment may be needed. Does that work?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I had a comment. I had a conversation with Mr. Oberman. Majority of the items, you know, on the report are technical in nature. And he's agreed to, you asked for the majority of the technical items. I asked him to, just to the waivers, setting forty yards or- I mean, he's gonna, leaving the technical items, we're just, so waivers, so see. Which is fine with me. All right. So, uh, Mr. Oberman, just for the record, we're agreeing to the items in, uh, Mr. Cornell's report, the technical items. We're only gonna discuss those issues which may need a waiver or where there may be some need for clarification, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Take it away, Mr. Oberman. Which, which one, which section do you wanna talk about first?
I'll, I'll go through each section, um, and, and state what, what we're gonna go through in each one. And, uh, A, we're site grading and general comments are, uh, there was a few things like, um, we, we were to acknowledge that we have other governmental approvals that are necessary. The building aesthetics we were to address, that will be done by the architect. And the zoning requirements and testimony will be addressed by the planner. In, in, uh, item number seven, the applicant's engineer should determine the county requirements for Borden Town Av- Borden Town Avenue. We have met with the county on that, and, uh, we agreed to work with them. Uh, they, they thought it might be possible to accomplish the roadway widening that they would require within the existing easement area. Uh, and there are no immediate roadway projects for Borden Town Avenue at this time. Uh, in number eight, it is a waiver for proposed parking in the front yard. Uh, parking has been proposed in the areas, uh, of at least effect on flood hazards, on wetlands, and environmentally sen- sensitive areas. So, that, that's why the parking has been put in those areas. And parking has, has been proposed in areas away from truck movements for safety. So, that was our response to the waiver for parking in front yards.
Okay. So, we are requesting that waiver?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, nine is a waiver for proposed fifty-foot landscape buffer. Uh, I guess that may have turned into a variance, but it, from the, uh, from the waiver perspective, parking, I mean, um, the land, the buffer, uh, the parking has been proposed in the buffer for reasons we discussed previously, but Robert Street also separates the site from the residential neighborhood that is adjacent to Ro- to Robert Street. No, no, no house-
No houses.
-front on Robert Street.
On Roberts.
And the closest house, which is located on John Street, is more than a hundred and forty feet away from the OEG property line. So, for the most part, Robert Street is tree-lined already. And a lot of that has to do with some of the properties starting to, some of the trees are getting bigger too, also because of some of the houses being, uh, torn down in that area.
Okay.
Item eleven, under, under section A still, is a partial waiver from providing Robert Street road improvements. Robert Street is lightly traveled, does not have curbs or sidewalks. Charles and John Streets that abut Robert Street also do not have curbs and sidewalks. A pro- a proposed sidewalk along Robert Street would really not connect to anywhere, so. But the applicant does agree to upgrade the Robert Street entrance driveway and the intersection near Bo- in, and that area in and around Robert Street, where Robert Street comes into Borden Town, with new curb and sidewalk. I'm, I'm sorry, with new curb and asphalt. Number twelve was discussing the existing environmental conditions, which, uh, we're gonna answer that a little bit later with a letter from the LSRP, and that's gonna be provided, uh, as, and another, with a, with another statement.
Yeah, well, before you go further, just for, uh, Mr. Alferi and the board's benefit, uh, we will submit to the record a letter from our licensed site remediation professional that indicates the site has been cleaned up, and it has what's called an RAO, remedial action outcome, which is the gold standard in New Jersey today. Uh, and we'll be happy to provide that for the board's records. Thank you. Anything else in, uh, site grading? How about, uh, on that?
Yep, that completes A. B, we, we agree with, that sanitary sewer system report, and C, we agree with, the water distribution system report. Uh, D is storm drainage. Excuse me. Down at number twenty-eight, we acknowledge the Middlesex County road opening permit is required. At number thirty-three, we also acknowledge New Jersey DEP flood hazard area permit is required. All the other remaining items are agreed to.
Terrific. How about soil erosion and sediment control, section E?
That's section E, and we agree with all of that.
Section F, landscaping, like-
Section F, we have on, item one, is a waiver for providing street trees along Borden Town Avenue. Um, as the way that the parking stand is of right now, it's, uh, pretty much against the easement area, and there is no space for street trees along Borden Town Avenue. Um, and we, we have requested a, a waiver for that. Um, number three, it was a, that was the waiver for the, uh, foot candles spilling over the, the property lines on Robert Street. And we, we, we will, we will agree to do that. Uh, number four is a waiver to perform tree inventory and the replacement calculation. Uh, that, we, we requested that based on, uh, in, in New York, the number of trees that we've already proposed on the site, which was seventy-eight. But, um, we are, we are clearing trees adjacent to Robert Street for the employee parking area. So, uh, if, if necessary, we would agree to, uh, perform the tree inventory and replacement calculation if we felt that was necessary.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, that is something I would recommend, how is that, if you don't create a waiver, if you require the applicant, if you require with the tree, we'll report you to the department. And, and for the record, uh, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Cornell, we have no objection if you make that determination. Mr. Oberman stating for the record, I'm gonna provide the necessary inventory.
We, we, we can do that.
Yes. Okay, parking and road-
Yes, we have, no, item one, we do have a waiver from providing sidewalks along streets. That was, uh, also discussed under Robert Street site, uh, road improvements. If required by the county, sidewalks will be provided along Borden Town Avenue. But, uh, from our initial discussions with the county, they said they would not require a sidewalk along there 'cause they don't really have any. And again, it doesn't go anywhere. Uh, two is also a waiver from providing sidewalks between parking areas due to truck traffic, safe pedestrian pathways. Um, that's a partial waiver. We, we agreed with, uh, Mr. Cornell's suggestion of, uh, looking at sidewalks and safe pedestrian pathways, either via, via striping or whatever, to get the people from the parking lot areas to the building. So, that, that becomes a safety issue, and we agreed to work with the township engineer on, on that.
Great. And anything on your traffic?
Traffic engineer, number one, it will be discussed. Uh, the report will be discussed, uh, by the, our traffic engineer.
Great. Uh, Mr. Oberman available for questions?
Mr. Chairman, Mike Matten, I got a question.
Yeah, Mike.
On, uh, A, number nine, the, um, fifty-foot buffer requirement, which is now seventy feet because it's the SEC district, how many feet are you providing?
Our parking is, is, I would say, weighed up against the, uh, um, fence almost, so I would say at the, at a, at a minimum ten feet.
So, we, we decision of sixty feet?
Yes, yes.
Is any other buildings, the building directly north of your proposed building, is that in compliance with the ordinance, or is that in violation as well?
The building directly-
Any other buildings on the site, is, is there any other buildings on the site that don't comply with that ordinance?
With-
With the requirement?
There are some buildings within the buffer, um, now, there's no, there's no buildings within the buffer.
Okay, so you're on, you're, so we're deficient by sixty feet, is what I'm asking?
Yes.
In your testimony, you mentioned the distance from the nearest house. What was that footage again, if you mentioned?
The, the, the nearest house to, to our property line's a hundred and forty feet.
Okay, all right, so that makes a difference. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Jim?
Thank you, Mike. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, this is the township engineer, how does the township, how does the township, in our report?
We have no objection to-
We have no objection to the waiver, I say, he's the question.
Mr. Chairman, Mike Fowler, question?
Yeah, Mike.
Yeah, Mike. Mr. Overman, uh, early on in your testimony, I think you mentioned, you mentioned about a hundred and thirteen parking spaces in total.
Yes.
You have a hundred and fifty spaces in total, don't you?
Yeah, I think there's certain existing, total parking spaces aren't very total required, aren't pushing, parking spots. I think there's existing parking spots, yes, there are existing parking spots.
So if you're saving thirty-seven of existing parking spaces and adding a hundred and thirteen, there will be a hundred and fifty total?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, one of the, one of the items in our report, what does it do with the parking count? There are a number of deficiencies on the plan, on the plan, number of inconsistencies. We've asked the, we've asked the, we've asked the, and we've asked the back of the prior account.
And he's gonna go through and do that. They don't need a value, they just get the numbers on the plan, and they don't add up correctly, so we want to address that in future negotiations.
Mr. Chairman, I hope that questions regarding some of the waivers, uh, with driveway width and aisle width, will that be addressed by the, uh, traffic engineer for the applicant?
Driveway, oh, um, the, I would have to say, uh, there was a question, I remember from the planner, from, uh, the entrance driveway being fourteen point five feet wide, I believe, is what the existing is. That can be revised, and if, we can make that comply. So that, that would not be a waiver from our standpoint, we can agree to, to change that. The driveways, uh, I believe is misquoted, so I think, uh, our drive aisle complies.
So the drive aisle will be eighteen feet?
No, the drive aisle is fifteen, I believe, and that's what is required by the ordinance.
Maybe I misunderstood, I thought when it was forty-five degree parking-
It's, it's not forty-five degree parking.
It's a thirty-degree?
Thirty, thirty-degree parking.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Well, um, the chairman, also, I, I didn't see any traction closes on the property, on the plan, on the traction close? Yes?
Thank you. We have to provide those, yes.
That's all, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no other questions, can we call the next witness?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. All right, I'd ask that John Ray, uh, be called as our traffic expert, let him be sworn to lead and testify. Mr. Ray, is there?
Okay, I think you can hear me now.
I got you, Mr. Ray. Uh, do you swear, affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you state your name and spell it for the record?
Sure, uh, John Ray, R.E.A.
Thank you. Mr. Ray, for the record, by whom are you employed and in what capacity?
I am a principal with McCallan Ray Associates, uh, transportation and traffic engineers, Manascon and Westfield, New Jersey.
And have you been previously accepted as the traffic expert by this board?
I believe I have, yes.
Okay, um, it, does that satisfy the board, or we're always happy to do a short version of credentials?
Not as far as me, I'll make a motion to accept his credentials because he sat before us before. Now, a second?
I'm accepted.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ray, you've studied this site, and you did a traffic report dated November the sixth, two thousand nineteen, is that correct?
That is correct.
Would you give us the benefit of your conclusions in that traffic study?
Sure. Uh, we went after the site in October of, uh, twenty nineteen, and collected traffic volume data at the site driveways during the morning and afternoon peak hours. Um, we projected additional traffic that would be generated by the sixty-two thousand four hundred and thirty square foot, uh, building addition. Uh, we, we projected traffic volumes to the design year twenty twenty-two. We included, uh, background traffic growth from the NJDOT's historical growth rate, growth rate data for the area, and we analyzed the impact of the additional traffic being discharged onto Borden Town Avenue. As, uh, everyone may probably know, there is a substantial traffic volume traveling along Borden Town Avenue during morning and afternoon peak hours. And so there will be some delay associated with, uh, vehicles exiting out onto Borden Town Avenue during the morning and afternoon peak hours. Uh, generally, uh, according to the, um, analysis we've done, the act delay for people exiting out onto Borden Town Avenue, whether it's an employee or a truck, will be somewhere in the order of forty to forty-three seconds during peak hours. Uh, that is within acceptable traffic engineering parameters. Uh, you know, so there will be some delay, but it is, uh, acceptable as far as the delay that's associated with the exiting movements. Uh, more importantly, the site distance along Borden Town Avenue is, is very good. It's a level and straight alignment. Uh, as everyone knows, Borden Town Avenue is under the jurisdiction of Middlesex County. Uh, the applicant has met with the county, we have to meet, uh, we have to meet their requirements with respect to site distance. Uh, I believe we meet that, and, uh, Mr. Overman can, you know, prepare whatever, um, you know, additional items are necessary for the county. But at the end of the day, the traffic that is anticipated to enter and exit the site can do so safely and efficiently because of the adequate site distance and the, uh, relatively minimal amount of traffic that enters and exits the site, uh, in connection with the traffic volumes on Borden Town Avenue. You will have acceptable levels of service. Um, that basically summarizes the traffic report.
Uh, one other, one other question, John, and that is, uh, you looked at the site circulation on the site?
Uh, yes.
And, and your conclusion concerning that?
And, and I concur with Mr. Overman, uh, with respect to his testimony as far as the, uh, the additional parking spaces that are being added, particularly up along the Robert Street frontage. They are being located in an area that is as far removed from the truck maneuvering areas on the property for the existing building that's up in that area, and also for the new building. I think they are in a, an appropriate location, away from the truck maneuvering areas. And, um, I think it's appropriate for those parking spaces for employees and visitors to be located in that area to, to separate that activity from the truck activity.
Terrific. Uh, Mr. Ray is available for questions.
Any questions? Ergonomical procedure.
Um, I have a few questions, if I may. Mike Fowler. Hi, Mr. Ray, Mike Fowler, how you doing tonight?
Mike, how are you? Haven't seen you in a while.
Good, thanks. I can't see you right now.
That's okay, I'm, I'm on my phone in my living room, we don't have much to say.
Okay, um, the handicap walkie spaces, uh, the four spaces proposed on the northeast side of the building, you don't have a plan, I guess, to look at, um, but-
I, I do have a plan in front of me.
Yeah, the four spaces on the northeast side of the new building, the handicap spaces, I just, there doesn't seem to be any easy way for, because a person uses those spaces to get to them. Um, have you looked at that, and can they get to those spaces faithfully?
I see where they are, I'm probably, I don't know where the doors are to the building. I'm probably gonna have to punt that to Mr. Overman or who are architects, 'cause I'm not quite sure where the doors to the building at these parts.
There's a door in that location, but it goes through like a locker room, or it's not a, to a look for access to the building. So it doesn't seem to be a door location, yeah, that, but the architect can address that.
I, I, yeah, I, I, I actually don't have the, I have the site plan that Mr. Overman, uh, prepared, but I don't have the architectural, so I don't know what's inside the building in that area. You know, perhaps the architect can address that, but if not, I'm sure we can, uh, get together and make, uh, whatever adjustments are necessary for the handicap spaces.
Thank you, and since the, uh, the main entrance, entrance and exit drive seem to be from the center of Borden Town Avenue that's being eliminated, I think it's gonna be an entrance only. Um, and it, then it appears that, that most, uh, westly driveway over by Robert Street will be used more frequently, and-
That is correct.
Do you feel that's why we can handle the volumes?
I do, uh, there, there's very little residential traffic, uh, utilizing that, uh, utilizing Robert Street because of the other streets that are in the area, Charles Street and John Street. And, uh, those are the streets that are primarily used by the residences in the area. Robert Street is almost exclusively used by the applicant. And if Mr. Overman indicated, I do believe there are going to be some improvements made to the pavement and the curbing in that area, so, uh, I do think that's gonna work appropriately.
There appears to be a utility pole sitting in the paved portion of Robert Street. I don't know if that's within the right of way, and the street is paved on the west side of the pole also. Would that take into consideration?
I don't see that, Mike, I think that's something that, uh, Rich is gonna have to, um, settle up with, with the county. If there is a utility pole in that area, it's gonna have to be relocated. I don't see it on my plan, but, uh, if there's something that needs to be relocated, uh, that'll have to be done.
I, I had a question on, I guess, traffic trails, access thing, the loading dock. Uh, again, I think you would need option of having the plan probably to, to address that. Um, an idea for directional arrows at some of the, some of the parking areas at the entrance and exit drives, could that be provided, and do you agree with that?
Ab- absolutely, yes, we can.
But, um, and John, the, the way the driveway is arranged on the, uh, in that southwest corner of the site, for the parking lot, the exit driveway is right up against the, uh, the westward property line, but then the entrance itself is kind of, you know, off. Have you looked at that alignment, and that works for you?
Yeah, I, you know, the, the driveway is fairly wide, I think it works for both trucks and, uh, you know, automobiles. Um, there's no issue with, you know, vehicles approaching on curbing or anything of that nature.
And, uh, the trucks, it appears on the architectural, will be inside the building when it loads or unloads? And not out into the parking lot?
Probably better, better answered by the architect, that may be, uh, true. Um, I, I don't have the architectural, so I can't answer that question.
Thank you, that's all, Mr. Chairman.
The architect is next, so let's see if he has a good memory and remembers your questions. Uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Ray's open for questions, but I think they've been asked, if they have, I'll call my next witness, who's the architect?
Yes.
Should that be accepted? Okay, our, uh, our next witness is Jose Carballo, New Jersey, uh, registered architect. He's gonna answer all of, of Mr. Fowler's questions. And after that, he called and sworn, so he can give testimony.
I'm here. Yeah, can you, or, good evening, can you please, uh, do you swear, affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I do. Can you please state and spell your name for the record? Absolutely, Jose, J.O.S.E., last name Carballo, C.A.R., B.S.N. Boy, A.L.L.O.
Thank you. Mr. Carballo, for the, by whom are you employed and in what capacity?
I, I'm the president of Jose Carballo Architectural Group, uh, we're located in Hackensack at one seventy-one Main Street. Uh, we've been there since nineteen eighty-six.
All right, and have you ever been, uh, accepted by the, the licensed architect?
I have not had the pleasure of appearing in front of this board prior to tonight.
All right, would you give the board the benefit of your credentials?
Absolutely, I'm, uh, I'm a graduate of AGIT nineteen eighty, I received my license in nineteen eighty-six. Uh, I have appeared in every board in Hudson County, about fifty percent of the boards in Burton County, Trenton, Camden, Newark, uh, Patterson, uh, several of the major cities in New Jersey.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept-
Chairman, I make a motion with respect to the professional data professional.
Thank you, can I have a second? Second. All in favor?
Thank you. Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Carballo, two questions.
Yes.
What is it gonna look like? And then, secondly, answer Mr. Fowler's questions.
Absolutely, so, so this is a building that actually fits the adage of, uh, form follows function. Uh, it's a long building, uh, the process, uh, is, um, uh, contained within this building is a linear process. Trucks come to the building with, uh, raw material, raw material gets taken out, uh, taken off the trucks, uh, put into, uh, racks waiting for, um, the fabrication of the cages that Mr. Engel discussed, uh, previously. Uh, these cages could be sixty feet long, could be six, eight feet in diameter. Uh, just to give an idea, how heavy this is, if you've ever seen a rebar, a reinforcing bar, that's such as the ones that are put into concrete, uh, you see that they're probably about an inch thick. Uh, these are four inches thick, so this is heavy material, this is a heavy construction, uh, and, and that's why they're using deep, uh, foundation settings. Um, building is long, it's about, it's about four hundred feet long, uh, it's about a hundred and sixty feet wide, uh, and, and that's the area that contains all the fabrication, uh, of the product. There's a small area, uh, to the north, uh, which contains, uh, men's and women's toilets, it contains a lounge, and it also contains, uh, the office area for this building. Building is also connected to the existing buildings, uh, on the west side of, of the building. Um, yes, the trucks do come into the building, uh, so all the functions are within this building, actually happen within this building. Uh, doors open, trucks comes in, and, and it gets you loaded or unloaded, uh, within that area. Um, building is about forty feet high at its peak, uh, it has a, a peak roof. Uh, the street wall, or the eve height is thirty feet. Uh, this is necessary to be able to fabricate the prod- uh, the product and to, uh, lift the product and carry it, uh, you know, from the floor to the truck. Um, we did do some, uh, uh, colorized elevation in the building, uh, knowing that it's a long building, it's a tall building. Uh, what we did is we actually horizontally, um, actually vertically, uh, we broke up the building into three, uh, different areas, uh, and they go horizontally alongside the building, uh, with three different colors. Uh, the building is a metal building, uh, it has, um, uh, um, not a texture, but it has some relief to it, uh, and basically matches the steel buildings that are on the site. Uh, what we did is the bottom, um, if, if, can I share our drawings, if you don't mind?
Absolutely.
The town, the, is, were the drawings submitted to the board?
The joint, the joints were submitted, I was just wondering if I could-
So they're in their packages, but, Mr. Ralph Ferry, do we have to separately mark them?
Uh, no, no need.
All right, so, if, if you, Mr. Carballo, why don't you put in front of your screen what, what the building looks like? The board-
Yes, I have to be, I have to be allowed by the host.
Oh.
Okay, I, I can't do it on my own.
All right.
It's an municipality.
Which, which plan are you looking at?
Oh, yeah. That's not it, it's, uh, it's the architectural drawings. Just identify the, the sheet when you, when you're speaking to it. Uh, this, no, this is the engineer in drawing. There you go. This, this, this is my drawing. So, um, yeah, I don't know if you can see my cursor moving around. So, so this is the building right here. As you can see, it's a long, long building. Uh, the main part of the building, which is this portion here, that's your manufacturing portion. Let's call it fabrication, because that's basically what gets done in here. Uh, this little bump out here is where the offices are, office, uh, toilets, uh, lounge area. And this is a truck area back in the north side of the building. All the trucks come in from this end, uh, which I believe this is the, the Roberts Avenue or Robert Street, uh, um, uh, side of the, of the project, uh, the property. Uh, this being the, um, the west side of the property, this is where the trucks are coming in. They're coming to the building. Um, if we could go to the next, um, next page, please. For clarity, which sheet are you speaking of? Uh, okay, I, I thought I believe it was, uh, T one hundred, which is the title sheet, uh, which showed the key map. Uh, this is now A one hundred. A one hundred shows the clear front of the building. Uh, as you can see, uh, it's a relatively narrow to, to long building. Um, it's over four hundred feet long, a hundred and sixty feet wide. Uh, you have one, two, three, and four, uh, truck doors. And this lines that you see here means it's a trench where the, the truck actually comes into it. Uh, so like the rear of the truck at that point is, is levelled with the, the floor so that, uh, the material can either be, uh, removed from the truck or loaded onto the truck easily. Uh, all these lines that you see back here, uh, those are racks where the material is stored, uh, so that as it comes off the truck, it goes into whichever, um, area, uh, that particular, uh, piece or, uh, or part goes into. Then it gets taken out here, uh, gets fabricated, and then goes into where the truck is. Back in here, now you see all of the office, uh, with the nonfabrication portion of it. Uh, there was a question as far as doors. Uh, there's a man door here at this end. There's another man door here at that end, and then there's the, the door that goes through the office, through the lounge. And then there's back in here, there's a door that connects them to the existing, uh, facility. Uh, if we go to the next one. This is now A two hundred. Uh, simplistically, this is just the roof. We wanted to show which way, uh, the water's gonna shed. Uh, and, uh, we have gutters alongside, uh, the low end, uh, of the, uh, the roof, uh, and it gets collected, uh, into liters. And if you go to the next sheet, which would be, uh, A three hundred. Next sheet, please. Next one. There it is. Thank you. So now you're gonna see this building that is. I really like that. So now you see this building that is, that is very long, uh, that proposed, uh, we go the front elevation. That's the elevation that is facing, uh, Boardent Town Road. Uh, as you can see, we basically divided the building into two areas. You got your base, you got your middle, you got your top. Uh, we wanted to create a, a heavy base for the building, so, so we selected this deep blue. Uh, and then we had to differentiate to gray, uh, just to break out the, uh, the height of the building. Uh, those lines that you see going up and down, those are meters, uh, coming down from the gutters, uh, bringing the rainwater down to a, an underground system. Uh, we provided clear story, uh, windows, uh, just to provide some natural light inside of the building. Uh, the elevation that you see down at the bottom, which we say is the left elevation, that is the west elevation. Uh, as you can see, you have the four truck doors, one, two, three, four. And then you have one and two man doors as opposed to truck doors. Uh, and, and, and all those doors are there for obviously accessing to the building, but more importantly for exiting, uh, in case of fire. So the doors have been strategically located so that we can maintain the distances required for fire exit. Uh, back in here, uh, you can see the low, uh, building. This is the, uh, uh, the office portion of it. And you do have another, uh, smaller truck door back there. Um, again, this is a, a metal building. It's a, it's a pre-engineered, uh, metal building. Uh, and, you know, the, the steel obviously has to be, uh, designed so that we can use, uh, you know, hoist to pick up all the, uh, not, not so much the raw material, but when you put it together. Uh, I'm, I'm not sure how much that weight, but I would imagine it's tons after tons after tons of, uh, of weight. Uh, it's, it's a low pitch roof. Uh, it's about ten feet. You can see the, uh, the top of the, the roof here at forty. You can see the east or the street wall is at thirty feet. Uh, and, and that's, that's basically the, uh, the building.
Great. So listen, what about, uh, Mr. Fowler's question about the location of the handicap parking space? Are they in the best location or should they be moved?
Well, I don't, I don't know where the handicap spaces are. I mean, that's part of Mr. Overman's, uh, site plan. Uh, but basically what the code says is that the parking spaces have to be as close to a door, uh, a man door as possible. Uh, the least fact, the least distance to the man door. I will make sure that that, they're located that way.
All right. And I'm sure Mr. Overman will as well. Uh, Mr. Carballo is available for questions.
Any questions?
Just one quick one. Can you hear me?
Yes, Mike.
Yes, I can. Okay. Um, the CFO, uh, has done a testimony that all raw materials are gonna be brought in by rail. And you just said that they're all things are gonna be brought in by truck. Just to clear the record, are you gonna have both forms of transportation to bring in raw materials? Well, we gotta get them from the train into the building, uh, cause the train tracks won't go to the building. So they get loaded into the trucks and the trucks go into the building.
And I, and I think, uh, that, uh, Mr. Engel, who's still here, and we'd be happy to get him back up. I think he said ninety percent of the, uh, raw materials are coming by rail. That would leave a certain percentage that would be driven. And if you, if you'd like, I'd be happy to get him back up to clarify.
No, if that, if that's what it is, that's fine. I just don't wanna have something in the resolution that says all materials coming in by rail and then trucks are going in and then you're not even part of it. Great. I was referring to getting the material from the train itself into the building. Okay.
Chairman, Mike Fowler. Mr. Carballo, uh, the handicap parking spaces are in that northeast corner of the building. And there are two man doors there, but one man door goes into the office, the other one goes into a locker room. Doesn't seem like somebody with this ability can get into those doors or suppose. Well, I assume those man doors are at the back of the building.
Right. So, so those doors have to be, um, accessible, uh, and the building has to be accessible. So we'll make sure, I mean, we've, we've gone through several iterations of the plan. Uh, and I may not be caught out to the latest, but we have to make sure that wherever there's a handicap spot, uh, it's the closest point to where a door would be. And we'll make sure that's, that's where it goes.
And the door wouldn't go through somebody's office or through the locker room?
Well, I, it, it may interest would be through, at, at that point would be through the office. The, the locker room obviously makes it easier. The lounge makes it easier for people to go in and out as they're having their coffee break or, you know, drink or whatever. Uh, but the main, uh, access to the building, to it office area is through the office itself.
And the trucks, when they back into the building, will they back completely into, into the building with the tractor also? Will it close the door or will the tractor stay outside the building?
I don't know if they close the door, but we made those trenches long enough where a six foot trailer could be able to fit in.
I was just thinking if, if the operation does run on a Sunday, I'm not sure what operation occurs. First of this angle, but probably moving still around isn't the quietest thing. That if the trucks were inside the building, it's definitely come down the noise if the residents were on outside the building or also.
I'll sure we make those trenches long enough so that the entire truck can be inside and the door can close down. Yeah, that's, that's not a problem.
And then one question for Mr. Ray, if I may. John, um, next to those handicap parking spaces, there's another loading dock, you know, for, it looks like a tractor trailer will pull in through. Can that, have you looked at that? Can a tractor trailer get to that spot and get in and out?
Mike, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I wasn't sure if I was muted or not. It looks like everything's acceptable. Um, whatever changes we need to make to adjust the, uh, handicap spaces away from that area, I think we can do it. Um, I, I, I don't see it being an issue, but again, I'm looking at a plan and a scale of one inch is equal to sixty feet. So, um, I think it looks acceptable. Um, but we will, besides myself, Mr. Overman and the architect, we will address that issue and, and, and make that, uh, something to your satisfaction.
And the, the truck loading spot is next to the handicap spaces.
Yep.
Can we get a turning template on that to show that it works?
Uh, Mike, it's hard to find a turning radius template for one inch is equal to sixty feet, but I will double check that, uh, and, and make, it, it certainly looks like, uh, there's plenty of room out there for the truck to maneuver to get into the loading zone. I didn't think it was necessary to try to find a template for that, so I think it looks fine.
Okay. Thank you. That's all for the chairman.
Thank you, Mike. Any other questions?
Any other questions for Mr. Carballo?
Doesn't appear to be.
I think I'd ask that, uh, our, uh, clean up that Christine Capone, be called and sworn that she gave planning testimony.
Good evening.
Do you swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you please state, state and spell your name for the record?
Yes, it's Christine Mazzaro, N A V Z A R O, Capone, C O as in lawyers, F as in frank, O N E. Business address is one twenty-five Half Mile Road, Street two hundred, Red Bank, New Jersey, zero seven seven zero one.
Thank you. Just to the record, Christine, are you, um, is it, what is the title of your business?
The, the title of my business is Capone Consulting Group, LLC. I am the principal and owner. I've been testifying as a professional planner for twenty-four years. I've been qualified in Sayerville as an expert witness and about four hundred other planning and zoning boards throughout the state.
Okay. You, you haven't been around the roof, obviously.
Couple nights out. So I'm less than a virtual night home.
I can imagine. So, uh, if you would, we'd appreciate your review of this application and a justification under the municipal land use law for the two fault variances that are requested and for the waivers that were requested as well.
Yes, of course. I've had an opportunity to review the application submission documents as well as Mr. Cornell's review letter and Mr. Fowler's June twelfth, two thousand and twenty review letter. So I don't, um, disagree with Mr. Fowler that we do need the variances for the front yard setback to the, um, even the road right way or the roadway easement line opening for Boardent Town Avenue. The structure's actually set back fifty feet and we are compliant with the setbacks for the zone. We are not impacting the existing nonconformities of point five seven feet. I'm sure the board is very familiar with the subject application, so you know that it's developed with a number of existing buildings on it, and we are not impacting that existing nonconformity. And we're also asking for a variance for the buffer, as was testified to by Mr. Overman earlier this evening. The actual buffer is fifty feet and then we have to increase it because of the height of the building in the zone. So we're asking for relief from that requirement. But when I think, and, and one of the board members had questioned about this earlier as to, and we as a team had two Zoom meetings to prepare for this case. And one of the things we discussed as a team was, well, what is the distance to the actual closest residential structure? And if you had an opportunity to look on the site plan, we actually have that dimension on one of the plans. It actually shows you that from the corner, the corner of the new proposed building, which is on the western portion of our site, we're actually a hundred and forty-seven point twenty-two feet to, um, to the end of the, the closest or really to the corner of Roberts Road. And there's no residences, and Mr. Overman talked about this as well, that front's on actual Roberts Road. So yes, it do require some, what I would consider, um, technical variance relief in conjunction with this application. But I think the board can certainly grant a relief under the C one as well as the C two statutory criteria. When the board is thinking of the C one statutory criteria, lawful pre-existing structures certainly qualify as meeting the statutory hardship criteria. And here you have an existing developed site, and as planners, we try to balance that with, um, what the zoning district allows and what the town wants to see occur in these zoning districts. So when you do that balancing, one of the most important things to do as a planner is to be guided by the master plan. And quite specifically in two thousand and thirteen, the Sayerville master plan identifies the site as being the S D D, Special Economic Development Zone. But more importantly, the master plan designates this land use classification to provide for a range of commercial and industrial land uses to meet the borough's economic development objectives. And they also know, one of the board members asked earlier about the employment and, and it was important to the borough, I would imagine, to not want to limit the expansion of employees on the site because this is what your master plan calls for, for additional growth and development. So when you balance that with the variance relief that's required, I think the board can certainly conclude that we meet our statutory burden of proof under the C one criteria. I think you can also apply the C two criteria and cite certain purposes of the land use law that would be advanced. I think the criteria G, which talks about providing sufficient states in appropriate locations for a variety of uses, um, we are providing for sufficient states. And this is definitely an appropriate location, given the character of Boardent Town Avenue and the, the master plan designation for the sheet. So I think when the land law asks us as planners to talk about the negative criteria, it asks us to talk about a substantial detriment. In this case, I don't think any of the variant relief that rises, that we're asking for rises to the level of a substantial detriment. I think the benefits of allowing the applicant to stand in this location certainly outweigh any detriment. The character of this area is established. And when you look at the fact that we are introducing more formal landscaping on our western property line than exists today, I think the board can certainly, um, be comfortable that we meet our statutory burden of proof and that we have balanced the positive and negative criteria. And we certainly satisfy our statutory burden of proof for the, um, for the variance relief that's required. The tax on the waivers is a little bit different, and I know our engineer talks, um, testified to all of them, but the standard, the standard on a waiver is really, are the waivers really necessary? And really the minimum that's required to accomplish the site plan and still balance the intent of the ordinance. And I think in this application, you know, for a site of this size, um, our, our application is substantially compliant with the lion's share of the design requirements in the ordinance. And I see no reason why there would, um, be a planning reason that would preclude the board from finding that the statutory burden of proof is met for the variance relief and waiver relief associated with the site plan.
Mr. Capone is available for questions.
Chairman, I just have one question, if I may. Mr. Cornell, first. Uh, Jay? In your report, you had mentioned that the front yard setback is measured from the right of way easement line and not from the property line. Did I read that correctly? The building?
No, it is measured from the, uh.
I didn't hear your response. All right. From the easement line or from the, I think it's from the easement line.
I think the comment, I have it in front of me, if I could clarify. I have it in front of me. In your May thirteenth review letter, Mr. Cornell, on page, it's under your updated technical engineering review. Comment number seven on the, under your updated technical engineering review states the proposed building setback line is being measured from the existing right of way line rather than the road east, the road widening easement line. The applicant's engineers should determine if Middlesex County will require any further right of way designation along Boardent Town Avenue, which would also impact the front setback line location. So that was from your May thirteenth, twenty twenty report, specifically the updated technical engineering review. Under subset, under section A, site grading and general comments, that was comment number seven. And again, the way it read, the important part of this discussion is, the proposed.
the proposed building setback line is being measured from the existing right of way line rather than the road widening, widening easement line.
I, I see that, yes, I see that. This is measured from the right of way line.
Sir, was, was additional dedication required by the county? Then it's a, it's a, it's a variant in the future. And I can speak with Mr. Oberman about that and he agrees that the county does require dedication instead of an easement. There may be a need for a variance and now they require another appearance before the board in the future. But at this time, it's measured from the right of way and it does provide the committee required by the board.
Okay.
Um, so, Mr. Chairman, it's, it's called theory. If, they go back to the county, I think Mr. Oberman had mentioned that they may be requiring improvements within the easement area and they ask for dedication. Rather than having the athlete have to come back for a variance in the future, can we incorporate that, um, into this approval? The application approved tonight so that they can measure, um, from the, looking easement lines with the forty foot variance? We're making that clear? So right now it's measured from the property line. Um, but if you back to the county, the county, I think, is requiring improvements within the right of way easement. If they require dedication at that point, rather than having them come back for a variance with additional ten feet, will you include that in this resolution?
I think you have objection of including, including that.
Chairman?
And I would add to that, that it's like greasing the gas station. You can't have too much. Trying to deal with the, the possible contingency of the dedication is, uh, a great deal of help to us in the event there is that situation. Although, Mr., you know, we don't know what's going to happen with the county, but putting that in in the, in the contingent event that the county requires, it would certainly be very helpful to us. We appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I have no objection to including that in the resolution if the board's inclined to approve.
Okay, thank you.
That's all for the chairman, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Capone?
All right, if not, Mr. Chairman, that concludes our case. Um, if the conclusion of any public testimony, we appreciate the opportunity to either respond or make a conclusion or a statement.
Like to make a motion over to the public?
I'll make that motion.
Opposed? To keep this meeting as organized as possible, residents who wish to speak in one of the public portions are to press star nine, which will notify us that a person from the public wishes to speak. At that time, you will be asked for your name and address and be limited to a five minute comment period.
Do we have anybody?
Everybody.
No.
Hearing none. All right, there's one. They're unmuted.
Okay, resi, resident?
Hello.
Hello.
Hello, you there?
Hello, you there? Hello?
Yes, hi, can you state your name?
Sir, you need to unmute on your end.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we got you now. Can you state your name, please?
Am I in the public speaking now?
Yes.
Please state your name for the record, sir. Andrew. You still gotta repeat yourself, please?
My name is Frank Deluca. I live in fifty-five Charles Street.
Fifty-five Charles Street?
Correct.
And can you spell your, your, your last name, please? Thank you. Please proceed to your comments or questions.
Yeah, I mean, um, one of the comments I want to make is the, um, I was told a while ago that the doctor's responsible for maintaining the grass along Robert Street. Um, I know this is a separate issue from the building, but that's one of the issues, um, between Robert Street and the, uh, pump station. Okay, I don't know if they're aware of that, usually it's very overgrown. Um, another one is the, the lights that they have currently in the parking lot, they're kind of winding to cars coming down the neighborhood and the people driving on Sand Hill Road across the street. Um, if this building is built, are those lights going to be coming down? Or, you know, is something going to be addressed about that? I thought it's too many ones I want to mention. Um, I want to mention about the road improvement on Robert Street, but they mentioned that already, so.
So, um, would you like response or do you want to wait till all the public comments are finished?
Um... It's more, it's more official that I want to be addressed and, you know, so if they can make a comment now, I'll be fine.
Mr. Smith, you can respond to his, uh, inquiries. Okay, well, um, number, let it go in reverse order. Uh, we're, you know, first time we're hearing about the issue of, uh, light spillover from a light in the parking lot, but we can certainly ask Mr. Oberman to take a look at it. And maybe, maybe it's a matter of a shield, um, but we're certainly happy to look at it. Probably, everybody wants to be a good neighbor.
Yeah, we, yeah, I guess.
All right, so with regard to maintaining grass on Robert Street, I can tell you I have no clue. Uh, let me ask Mr. Engel, are you aware of any responsibilities with regard to maintaining grass on Robert Street?
No, no.
Why, if I can ask Mr. Deluca, why do you believe that, that?
It, it's a long issue. It's been a long issue. The town, you have to take care of it. But then the town found out that it was private property on the road and they stopped to take care of it. And obviously they never noticed that property. Which, you know, takes that that way.
The general rule, the general rule of thumb is that you are responsible for maintenance of your property. So to the extent that, uh, OEG is doing that, they're doing the right thing. If there's a piece of the property they're not maintaining, that's a different issue. But, Mr. Deluca, do you believe this is the street or do you live far above all these properties?
Well, OEG property goes up to Robert Street and just like I would have to take care of the property in front of my house, you know, that's, there's, like I said, the town was taken care of for many years. And when they stopped, they never told anybody, so obviously they weren't knowledgeable of it.
It's like the problem...
That's what they should press up with the road department.
Yeah, that's where I think where you're going to get relief. The problem is that it actually becomes an issue if they start to do something on township property. If it's township property, the township has to be responsible. They go onto township property, they start to get liability issue.
Yeah, I understand that. Yeah, I mean, it's not their fault, you know, about, you talk to the road department about it and maybe the road department will do it for them, you know? But the people with the bike...
The crowd, Mr. Smith, you say... Quiet, you're quiet. Okay, sir?
My thing is, it's like the parking lot. And a rear wheel high and when you turn onto Robert Street or if you're coming down from across the way, Borden Town Avenue, down Sand Hill, they blind you like you in Belize. People driving, nobody's told about it, but, you know, if you could run up.
Mr. Rash, you don't have any problem with... I was going to say, Mr. Rash, if you have no problem with our engineer taking a look at that light, uh, issue and seeing if there's some relatively simple resolution to it, do you?
No problem at all.
Good.
Okay, and the other question is, a lot of the outside operations that come into place, are they going to be moved indoors now? There's sometimes dead noise all day long.
Well, in trying to respond to that, I believe what, um, our architect said was that the building is being designed so that any of the loading or unloading can be done inside the building. If I'm wrong, somebody correct me, but that would seem, it is a new building. So it seems to be that, uh, it's a pretty good, um, uh, approach to keeping noise from the operations under control of the inside of the building.
Particularly like one, two in the morning, you know? Yeah.
Sure, they, they, you have to do it inside the building.
Yeah, because they unload the trucks, like you mentioned earlier. To bring them in if they do go, do it, go to that night, after a certain hour.
Anything else?
No. All right, well, once they're looked into, I'll just take it from there and say everything, I give up my time. Thank you for your time, Mr. Deluca.
Anybody else from the public wants to speak? Do I have a second?
One in favor? Opposed?
The board members present... Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. With all the waivers and variances that we discussed in the next meeting. Have a roll call, please.
Mr. Diadio?
Yes.
Councilman Delena? Councilman? Mr. McEnown?
Yes.
Ms. Ochenge?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Savili?
Yes.
Mr. Tai?
Thank you for choosing Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. I think you've got a good thing for your town.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and good luck. Thank you, good night, stay safe and healthy.
Have a nice Father's Day.
Old business, new business.
Ain't out of here yet.
So we have old business, new business administrative matters, planning board's next meeting.
Our next scheduled meeting is...
July fifteenth. Okay, I, I think we have a tentative, correct, Jay?
Yes, the, the place that chair will be for the housing project behind the senior center.
Board may recall this.
Board may recall this was discussed last year. They have to make them a, they have to make them a, they have to make them a tentative on the agenda for your July fifteenth.
Thank you, Jay. Like to open, uh, the meeting to the public?
Make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? To help keep the meeting as organized as possible, residents who wish to speak in one of the public portions are to press star nine, which will notify us that the person from the public wishes to speak. At that time, you will be asked for your name and address and be limited to a five minute comment period.
Anyone from the public? Make a motion to close?
All in favor? Opposed?
Make a motion to accept the motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Favor?
Thank you.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, everyone have a good one.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Think so.
You guys stay up?
Better not be, I'm yawning.
Okay, that lands all the wakers back there, what he was talking about, right?
Yeah, I had a buddy that lived on Joll Street, he got, he got swamped three times in a row.
Yeah.
Probably about sixty houses originally, now there are fifteen, so about two thirds were bought out by the state after Sandy.
And some of them didn't do anything.
They're still there, there's still houses there.